Hallelujah!
Hallelujah!
(In Hebrew)
For the Lord's holy name be glory!
(In Hebrew)
Even this evening, the Lord our God has given us this privilege to listen to God's word.
(In Hebrew)
The desire to hear God's words is continually diminishing in the midst of the people. Wherever the gospel is being declared, multitudes throng that place. Because the truths that we declare are concerning our true God. By coming to know about Him, we receive abundant blessings both for our spiritual life as well as for our physical life. Jesus, when He lived in this world, said, "Without Me, He can do nothing." We could be a wise people, a capable people, and we could have accomplished much. But if the Lord is not with us, we cannot receive abundantly the reward of God's blessings. Because the Lord has given me this privilege, even this evening, I do praise God. For meditation this evening, let's read from the Proptic Book of Isaiah in chapter forty-five and verse fifteen. In this word, we heard being read, "That verily thou art a God that hides thyself, O God of Israel, the Savior." Last evening, we considered certain things about who this Israel is. According to that verse, there is no doubt whatsoever that we indeed are that Israel. The reason is, the true overcomers and the true holy people are the true Israel. We read in Romans chapter two and verse twenty-eight that such a thing happens through circumcision by the Spirit.
(In Hebrew)
Saint Paul says, "He is not a Jew who is one literally," so to speak. If one has to become a true Jew, a true Israelite, the circumcision should be wrought in the Spirit. We, through the words of truth imparted by the Holy Spirit, the foreskin is cut off, which thereby results in circumcision.
(In Hebrew)
That we attain to this experience, we have to strive in prayer.
(In Hebrew)
Jacob wrestled in prayer.
(In Hebrew)
He wrestled with God.
(In Hebrew)
He wrestled with angels of God.
(In Hebrew)
And also with men. Saint Paul has also exhorted the church in various occasions that the church should wrestle with him in prayer.
(In Hebrew)
If we wrestle in prayer, we can gain victory.
(In Hebrew)
We will attain to a sanctified life.
(In Hebrew)
Therefore, as a result, we receive salvation. And with a glorious body, we will reside forever and ever with our Lord, attaining to our adoption, which is the redemption of our body. And the knowledge of knowing a Lord Jesus Christ, which is incorruptible, which is eternal, and that fades not away, is what God has reserved for us in the end.
(In Hebrew)
Till we attain to that, what should our life be like?
(In Hebrew)
How can we preserve our experience of victory and our holiness? When people desire, when people talk of holiness and an overcoming life, there is a desire seen in God's people, and people also take a resolution for that.
(In Hebrew)
But in many occasions, people are not able to be faithful in their resolutions.
(In Hebrew)
Therefore, people falter in many aspects.
(In Hebrew)
They are not able to keep their holiness, and they are defiled. As a result, many people tend to think that such a life is absolutely impossible. But we can understand very well that if we cleave to God, we can certainly attain to an overcoming life and preserve our holiness.
(In Hebrew)
We can attain to that experience only by the knowledge of knowing our God. One fundamental thing that we read here about God is that He lives hiding Himself. The Creator God of heaven and earth and all the things therein hides Himself. God is working wonderful things for the cause of man, despite doing wonderful things and working signs and wonders, He still hides Himself.
(In Hebrew)
For what reason does God hide Himself? He is the Lord of lords, He is the Almighty God, He is the Creator of everything that we see around us. If that be, so being the case, why does He still hide Himself?
(In Hebrew)
There are many reasons for that. Importantly, the reason why God does that is that He may, He can present an example for us.
(In Hebrew)
Secondly, He is not a God who seeks glory from man. Thirdly, because He is the Lord of lords, no man can behold God with his fleshly eyes and still remain alive.
(In Hebrew)
It is for that reason, He is a God who hides Himself. When we consider about our God as we read from First Timothy chapter six and verse fourteen.
Who only had immortality dwelling in the light which no man can approach unto, whom no man had seen nor can see, to whom be honour and power everlasting, amen.
(In Hebrew)
He dwells in the midst of a light which no man can approach unto.
(In Hebrew)
He is one whom no man had seen nor can see. We cannot catch a glimpse of the sun that God has created even for one second and still be fine.
(In Hebrew)
Just imagine how that God would be who created that light of the sun.
(In Hebrew)
No man can ever see the brightness of that light and remain alive. We all know as to what happened at a time when Saul was visited by God.
(In Hebrew)
We saw that a lightning flashed and a light shone all around Paul. As a result of his seeing that light, the eyes of Saul dimmed and he lost his eyesight. And seeing the flash of that light around Saul, even the people who were in the company of Saul, they were taken aback. Thereafter, Saul heard the voice of God from the midst of that light, but the people who were in the company of Saul did not hear it. Truly, any man who has seen the light of that God cannot remain alive. When Moses abode in God's presence atop the mount for forty days and nights, returned with the law of God. We see that Aaron and the people of Israel were not able to see the glory that shone on Moses' face, and they were filled with fear.
(In Hebrew)
We read about that in Exodus chapter thirty-four.
And came to Pals when Moses came down from Mount Sinai with the two tables of testimony in Moses' hand. When he came down from the mount, that Moses whispered that the skin of his face shone while he talked with him. And when Aaron and all the children of Israel saw Moses, behold the skin of his face shone, and they were afraid to come near him.
Therefore, Moses was not able to declare God's commandments to the people.
(In Hebrew)
And the circumstance was so that even God's people were not able to hear it. Therefore, we read that Moses cast a veil over his face even as he communicated the commandments to the people.
(In Hebrew)
Verse thirty-three.
(In Hebrew) Until Moses had down speaking with them, he put a veil on his face.
Because Moses abode in God's presence for forty days, the skin of his face was made to shine. This light that shone on the face of Moses, an ordinary light, was cannot, was not able to be seen by the people of Israel, for which reason Moses cast a veil over his face. Through these incidents, we come to understand that God hides His own self so that He may save His people from destruction.
(In Hebrew)
Once Moses expressed the desire of his heart to God.
(In Hebrew)
And they were engaged in communication as one would talk to a friend.
(In Hebrew)
Moses had the desire to see the face of the person to whom he was talking to. And he besought of the Lord, "Lord, let me see your glorious face."
(In Hebrew)
In verse twenty, as the Lord replies to him.
(In Hebrew) And he said, "Thou canst not see my face, for there shall no man see me and live."
Though Moses abode atop Mount Sinai for forty days, God did not reveal His face to him. But the brightness of God's glory transformed Moses. Well, the desire that you have is a nice and a true desire, but it cannot be fulfilled at this juncture. But to fulfill Moses' desire, the Lord made Moses hide in the cleft of a rock and then passed by, passed over him. We read that as the glory of God passed by, he saw God's hide parts, he was not able to see the glory of the face of God. Similarly, there is no doubt whatsoever that even in our lives shall well up this desire to somehow see the face of God.
(In Hebrew)
Zacchius was not able to believe that Jesus was God.
(In Hebrew)
But when we came to hear of the signs and the wonders worked by God. But when he heard of these, the doings of God, and him had this constant desire that he had to somehow see how the Lord would appear.
(In Hebrew)
But he was not able to realize and understand that Jesus was a true God.
(In Hebrew)
But he is working signs and wonders.
(In Hebrew)
And somehow I need to see and understand as to what his appearance would be like. Though our God is a God who hides Himself, He is a God who will make Himself known or appear before His people who seek Him diligently daily. Though the God of Israel is one who hides Himself, He is also one who will make Himself known or reveal Himself to those who diligently seek Him daily.
(In Hebrew)
How does He make Himself known?
(In Hebrew)
He does not appear according to the likeness that we think He has. Just like how Moses covered Himself with a veil, similarly God also hides Himself. As, as a passerby, He appeared.
(In Hebrew)
To some as a passerby and to some as a beggar.
(In Hebrew)
And to some, He appeared like a kitchener. And to some, He appeared like one who was serving at the tables. And to some, He appeared like one who was washing vessels. From this, we understand He does not perfectly or fully reveal Himself, but He was manifesting His purposes and His works through His doings. It is only when God vanished out of the sight of the people from there that people were struck with amazement, wondering, "But truly this is God." And the Lord was continuing to do such wondrous and amazing things in the midst of the people. Therefore, this Lord our God, when He wished to appear into this world, He appeared in such a guise so that man was not able to perceive that truly this was God. During that time, He was continually at work, but people were not able to perceive and understand as to who He was.
(In Hebrew)
When we read from the book of Job, chapter twenty-three, verses eight up to ten.
(In Hebrew)
We read here as to how Job came to know God.
(In Hebrew)
He was one who sought the Lord.
(In Hebrew)
And he received divine knowledge. Though he was rich, he did not manifest his riches to the people in the world, rather, he had this experience of constantly researching and trying to know God.
(In Hebrew)
He received much wisdom.
(In Hebrew)
He knew that God was a holy God. Therefore, he constantly sanctified his own family and his children so that his children may grow up in holiness. Though, because he possessed this knowledge about God, at a time when he was afflicted and when he was tried or tempted by the devil, he kept his lips from sinning against God.
(In Hebrew)
Till, even then, he had not seen God with his naked eyes. But when he researched more about God, he understood that he can see God, for which reason he said, "My own eyes shall see the Lord," but not now in this occasion. And he said, "In the end of days, the Lord will stand upon the circle of the earth, and not strange eyes will behold him, but mine old, my own will see the Lord," he said. Because he had this knowledge, he was able to understand that he would be defiled even if you reproached God from his heart.
(In Hebrew)
Therefore, he did not give his lips also to commit sin. And the Lord also accused the people who were with him, saying, "You have not used prudence and proper judgment to use words even as my former servant Job exhibited." And he goes forward, trying to understand and see this God who gave him this knowledge and was, and was working for him.
(In Hebrew)
Now what does he say?
Behold, I go forward, but he is not there, and backward, but I cannot perceive him. On the left hand where he did work, but I cannot behold him. He hid himself on the right hand, that I cannot see him, but he knows the way that I take. When he had tried me, I shall come forth as gold.
It, it almost appears like he is going before me, but when I try to reach over to him going forward, he is not to be found there. It almost appears like he is following me from behind, but when I turn backwards to see whether he is there, he is not to be found. He is at work for the cause of the people who are cursed and also for my, for my life, but when I try to turn to the left to see whether he is present, that he is not to be found.
(In Hebrew)
For he has hidden himself in the right hand.
(In Hebrew)
Is he remaining hidden there?
(In Hebrew)
Therefore, I am not able to perceive him with my fleshly eyes. He is working before me and behind me, I can perceive such things happening, but I am not able to explicitly see him, for he knows the way which I take.
(In Hebrew)
He knows the way which I take.
(In Hebrew)
This way that we take is, is not the way of, of men.
(In Hebrew)
I am passing through the path of fire.
(In Hebrew)
Now what is the revelation that he has? Just like how gold cast into burning fire, when it is then redeemed from there, becomes pure, similarly he says, "When I walk out of the fiery trials of my life..." similarly he says, "When I walk out of the fiery trials of my life, I will be presented as pure gold." In the life of every man who endeavors to know God, will this hope exist? Not only did Job alone have this experience, even everyone of us can receive it. No one nowadays asks, "Lord, we wish to see you. Reveal your face to us." But people believing in one thing joyously are hoping on one thing. On one day, will I see my Redeemer? And with my own eyes, will I see her? Perhaps my body may perish. But with my own eyes, will I behold and see my Redeemer? And he says, "With this desire, does my hot heart dissolve?" This knowledge that he possessed about God, it caused his desire to see God constantly increase in him. Therefore, he does not mind about his body, which was continually dissolving. This will perish as it is. Nonetheless, with my own eyes, will I see him. The eyes which behold that God are not corruptible eyes. To me will be given eyes which are incorruptible from God. With those pair of eyes, will I see my Redeemer? Therefore, regardless of what part of trials through which they go, they are not taken back. They do not faint. They rejoice in tribulations. The reason is, I would be brought forth as gold. They are beholding the glory of the holiness that awaits them. The thing that results as a knowledge of one endeavoring to know God. Even in the New Testament time, works of wonder were performed and Jesus hid himself even as he worked there. That's why in one juncture, the disciples of Jesus asked Jesus, "We wish to see the Father." What was Jesus' reply? He who had seen me had seen the Father. Even as I appear with God, the Father appeared. But if one sees outwardly, God the Father is not seen in the body of Jesus. All the disciples had this desire to see God the Father. But with their bodily fleshy eyes, they were not able to see God the Father who was hidden in Jesus. Jesus kept him hidden. When we read in 1 Corinthians, chapter thirteen and verse twelve. Jesus gives a reply to the disciples' desire.
For now, we see through a glass darkly, but then face to face. Now I know in part, but then shall I know even as also I am known.
No man shall see me and be alive. In 1 Timothy, chapter one and verse seventeen, it is said that God is an invisible God. According to that word, we see him partly darkly as in a mirror. This mirror is the word of God. And through the knowledge that we gain about the word of God, we are able to partly see him. Therefore, the Holy Spirit was sent by God into this world and whatever the Holy Spirit hears of God, he instructs us. As a result, we come to the knowledge of God. We see him through the knowledge that we gain. For which reason, the Holy Spirit is constantly assisting us. Therefore, we do not perish. One day, we will see him face to face. One day for sure, we will see him face to face. We will see him on that day face to face. On that day, seeing him, we will not be afraid. Neither will we perish on that day. When we read in 1 John, chapter three, verses two and three. Even Saint John the Divine, he clarifies this truth. This God whom we are not able to explicitly see today, this day, will we see one day face to face. But there is one other matter of hope and joy which is written about them. We will see him even as he is.
Beloved, now are we the sons of God? And it does not appear what we shall be, but we know that when he shall appear, we shall be like him, for we shall see him as he is. And every man that had this hope in him purified himself even as he is pure.
Truly, the God of Israel remains hidden. Therefore, it is not yet revealed as to what we would appear like. But one day, we will see the Lord even as he appears. Not like he appears today. Just like he has the glory of the Father about him, we will see him with that very same glory. On that day, he will not hide himself with anything. And we who will behold the glory of God on that day will be like unto him. Just see the mystery that remains hidden in the heart of God. If we say that a man who cannot even see the glory or the radiance of the sun today will have the privilege of beholding the glory of that great God and still live, what a wonderful and blessed experience would that be? Oh, people of God who have attained to this knowledge, do we really know our God having this hope in us? For what reason do we try to know him? Is it for the blessings of the world? Or is it to be like him, seeing him even as he is? Let none of us live our life being forgetful of the mystery of that knowledge that remains hidden in the mind of God. This God who remains hidden from our eyes, one day will make himself manifest and appear before us. On the day of his appearing, not everyone can present themselves boldly in order to see him face to face. Who can stand before him? Whosoever had this hope in him purified himself even as he is pure. A person who purified himself. When we continue to grow, attaining to the fullness of the knowledge of God. We by our souls will remove from us all things that defile us, everything that defiles our mind and works contrary to the knowledge of knowing God. We will not expect of another person to come to help us in the process of sanctification. Even Jesus, when he gave his people instruction, he said, "Now have you been made clean by the words that you have heard?" When the people were listening to the words of Peter that were being spoken. The people were convicted of their sins. Even as the people were listening to God's words with their ears, they were purging their hearts from sins and they were cleansing themselves. And the people who so sanctified themselves now gained the knowledge that they had to be united with the Lord in the truth of what a baptism. For which reason, they wholeheartedly surrendered to the words that they were harkening to. And the word made them clean. And they were also sanctified by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. When he finished speaking the word. And the Holy Spirit was shed abroad upon them. And they all began to speak in unknown tongues. Oh, people of God, sanctification through the word of God is that which helps us to receive the anointing of the Holy Spirit and further sanctification through the Holy Spirit. Even as we are all seated here, listening to God's work, that work, God's word, that work should be done in us. In those, this work of sanctification is done, will the Holy Spirit descend. And the people will be thrown about by an uncontrollable power. And the power of God will descend as if to shake up the place where we are assembled. That is the power of Pentecost. That is the power of resurrection. And to come to the knowledge of this, in Paul counted everything that he had as lost. And also rejected it as done. And the knowledge that he gained about God, it brought in that power. He who had this hope in him, that he may see the Lord even as he is, will purify himself even as he is pure. Only such a people will behold the Lord face to face. Here, the Lord is at work hiding himself. He is with us in company, nonetheless, he remains hidden from our sight. If his holiness should be formed in us. If we have to conform to his likeness. Just like how he remains hidden today. We should also see in our life a similar experience. What does Prophet Isaiah speaks about the Lord Jesus Christ who came into this world hiding himself? If we read from Isaiah, chapter fifty-two, verse fourteen.
And as many were stoned at thee, his visage was so mild, more than any man, and his form more than the sounds of men.
So, Isaiah fifty-three and verse two.
For he shall grow up before him as a tender plant and as a root out of a dry ground. He has no form nor commonliness, and when we shall see him, there is no beauty that we should desire him.
We have to pay close attention to both these verses. When people saw him, he did not even have the appearance of a man about him. The appearance of his face was something that did not even stir those who saw him to desire. He was born in this world and till the age of thirty, he lived like a true man. He did not appear as if he was God in any place, neither was any person able to understand that he was God. He who came into this world as in the image of a man, he lived as a man for thirty years. We know about the family into which he was born. A family stricken with poverty. Joseph was a carpenter by profession and that was what his livelihood was about. And when his children were growing. Joseph died. And there was no means for the livelihood of that family after his passing away. No means for eating anything. No means for providing education. No means to change hunger. And he was able to see the sufferings and the hunger which his brethren unto went. Even in those occasions, he did not work miracles and provide things for them. And he tried to engage himself in the profession of his father and he equipped himself with a chisel and a hammer in his hands. Because the wages that a carpenter would have earned during that time would not have been sufficient to run a family, he would have worked day and night in order to support the family. Because he started in this profession at a very young age, he would not have learned this. Because he started in this profession at a very young age, he would not have learned this profession very well too. Perhaps there could have been a lot of wrong things which he would have committed in the profession. Therefore, people would not have given him any work to do too. We know that he was with his parents till the age of twelve. But we do not know where he was up to the age of thirty. But I think that somehow he might have run away from home trying to earn something for the means of his family's livelihood. Well, because he was burdened about the bad state of his family's well-being, he might have controlled all his desires and his expenditure and he might have sent all that he might have earned wherever he was back to his family. Therefore, while he was yet young, his eyes shrank and his jaws, they closed up and his skin shriveled. He was one who was immersed in grief. When he had thoughts about his family, they were not joyous. Because he worked so hard not feeding himself properly at the right time with food, he lost the beauty of his image. Now because he did not have a form and commonness which was appealing and attractive, none of the Jews accepted him. Not only did the Jews disallow him, wherever he went, the people rejected him and thought ill and mean of him. They did not pay heed to his words. They did not receive his words in their ears. Wherever he went, he was neglected and set aside. If a man is neglected and set aside, a man certainly would be stricken with grief. Wherever he went, he was disallowed and he was the last and the meanest. In the midst of society, there was nothing that was provided to him. Neither was anything provided to the family. In this ways, his form and his visage underwent a change. When Saint Paul writes to the Philippians in chapter two and verse five. He, though being in the form of God, he hid that fact. He took upon himself the form of a servant and made himself of no reputation. And he was obedient unto death, even unto the death of the cross. This Jesus who appeared like a simple man up to the age of thirty, he constantly humbled himself, he did not make himself known. He was continuing to work signs and wonders. He entered into the synagogues and he preached the word. His words were those that captivated many. People seeing his works and his doings, they thronged him. Nonetheless, he never revealed his identity. Even in such occasions, he just maintained that he was a man. Truly, the God of Israel hides himself. In one occasion, when Jesus blessed bread and fish. When we read in John's Gospel, chapter six and verse fifteen. Their citizens of that land, they wished to make Jesus king and they wanted to take Jesus away with them by force. When Jesus came to know about this, what did he do?
When Jesus therefore perceived that they would come and take him by force to make him a king, he departed again into mountain himself alone.
If without you asking for or seeking for a post, a political post like an MP's post or an MLA's post, what will you do? What will you do? This is an opportunity provided by the Lord. Well, you will say instantly yes, because you will think that you can be of some service. Men today are so very desirous of manifesting that glory to other people. They wish to exhibit their knowledge to others. They have to manifest their capacities to others. They want to make known the beauty of their face to others. And also manifest the greatness of their families. And also about their education. And they also want to make known the achievements of their doings to others. And also make known the abilities of one's speeches. People in the world as well as we are all endeavoring to this end and have a great desire for this. For what reason? To captivate people and draw them to us. So that we may lift ourselves above other people. To show to other people as to who you are. Therefore, people endeavor to entice and draw many people towards themselves. For what reason do they dye their eyelashes? Why do they adorn their hair? They try to expose their face through the window so that others may see from outside. We see about the doings of a woman like that in Second Kings in chapter nine. And she peered through the window to show her face. She, who was inside, she showed her face. Don't you not know about the works of the evil spirits in the world? There is a website called Facebook in which people can publish their faces and make themselves known. And people also through Facebook link up with other people and communicate with other people. For which reason people leave their homes and go outside. Not just the unmarried, even those who are married, they go out in order to do such things. And they also registered themselves in internet clubs. And there they register and then they communicate and chat one with another. They forget their own selves. They forget the time going by. They forget their families. They forget even God. They do not even know time passing by. They constantly want to keep talking and talking and chatting. They want to keep on seeing the face. In recent times, I came to know that even some of us have this practice which is done secretly. They go there secretly to engage in these things so that they may reveal the beauty of their face to the world. They will reveal the beauty of their face to man. They compete in beauty contests and they wish to gain victory in it. They also engage in competitions in order to make known their abilities. These people do not have time to see God. They don't have a mind to pray. They do not open the Bible to read. But on Sundays, they are clothed in sparkling white. They have their Bibles in their hands and they come to God's presence with their children. These days are abounding husbands who deceive their wives and wives who deceive their husbands. If inquiries are made about what the reason is, there is lack of peace. I will go to the place where I desire to go, who are you to ask me? The children who see the doings of their parents, they will also change their life like this as they grow. Beloved, these days, this wicked spirit is pervading the world and it is also affecting the people of God in the church. If we speak to the people about the quality of the life of Jesus Christ when he lived in this world, people have not a year, they do not incline the years to hear. He took upon himself an image which we did not have a desire to see. The God of Israel hides himself. He did not expose his face to anyone. He hid his face even from those people who were keenly desirous of seeing his face, his face and just manifested his works. Truly, he is a God who hides himself. And when Jesus lived in this world, what did he say? When we read in Matthew's Gospel in chapter six and verse six.
But thou, when thou prayest, enter into thy closet, and when thou shutteth thy door, pray to thy Father, which is in secret, and thy Father, which is in secret, shall reward thee openly.
In Father who is in secret. The Father who is in secret will also see you secretly. He does not seek you at a place where you are present, where you wish to expose your face to others. He seeks after you in secret. That place of secrecy is where God is present. He is present in a secret place. He is mysterious. If we have to find out that secret place, it is something of a tall order for us. But it is a place which we can seek, find and attain to. If we have to behold our Father which is in secret. We also have to enter into that secret place. That is compared to the experience of prayer here. When the Lord Jesus Christ offered this prayer. His disciples beheld that his visage changed. When we consider from Luke's Gospel, chapter nine and verse twenty-seven.
And as he prayed, the fashion of his countenance was altered, and his raiment was white and glittering.
Now Jesus went in the company of just two or three disciples to his secret place to pray. He was continuing in prayer. I think that the disciples would have had their eyes open to see how Jesus was praying. It is so, in our case also, when some people are praying, others will have their eyes opened wide. Sometimes I would think that maybe these people who are having their eyes opened will be caught up to the Lord when he comes secretly, even as other servants of God are in prayer with their eyes closed. We do not know for what reason Peter, James and John had their eyes open and what they were seeing around when Jesus was praying, but they truly saw with the eyes Jesus praying. They saw the face of Jesus shining. They saw the garments of Jesus turning white. Where did they see this happen? In that secret place. In the place where he was in prayer. It is because they also entered into that secret place, they were able to see this transformation with their very own eyes. Oh beloved people of God, if we have to behold the glory of this God who remains hidden in secret, we also have to enter into this secret place. Even in the matters of prayer, we should not expose our faces so that we may be seen of others. You should not pray just to be seen of others. You should not expose your face. You should not gather people out in the open in order to show your face. Therefore, if you have to behold that God, you have to preserve in you that secrecy about your prayer. Many people are not able to enter into that secret chamber of theirs. Recently, I asked a couple of people, are you given to private prayer? There was a couple who came to me to be prayed for. Well, you may pray as a family, but do you separate yourselves and pray individually to the Lord, I asked them. And they confessing till now, no, we do not have that experience. Many people, they set aside the experience of the secret chamber. They do not understand the greatness of it. Where does the Lord come seeking us? He comes seeking after us in that secret chamber. He arrives there in order to see our face. Oh beloved people of God. You should be found present in the place where God comes seeking after you. But Adam was not present in the place where God placed him. He was not present in the place where he should have remained hidden. We read in Genesis, chapter three and verse eight, that he hid behind the bushes. He hid behind the bushes. In this way, so that people may manifest their faces to the world, they go to hide behind the trees and bushes. These are places where trivial pleasures are enjoyed. Today, people have to be sought and found out in such a place. But the Lord does not arrive seeking you there. The Lord seeks you in the secret chamber where God also is in residence. The people who go to that place are those who cover and hide themselves. These are people who hide themselves from the face of the world, just like the Lord hides and hides himself and is in secret. They do not make known their beauty to the world. They do not exhibit their wisdom to the world. They do not make known their abilities to the world. They do not endeavor to gain education and, and qualification just to manifest their wisdom to the world. They do not expect any reward by exposing themselves to the world. They do not by exposing themselves to the world seek riches. Neither do they adorn themselves to make themselves known to the world. Where are they present? As we read in Song of Songs, chapter two and verse fourteen.
Oh my dove, that art in the cliffs of the rock, in the secret places of the stairs, let me see their countenance, let me hear their voice, for sweet is thy voice, and their countenance is comely.
Here, we hear the voice of God speaking. To whom is he speaking? Oh my dove, that dwells in the cliffs of the rock and in the secret places of the stairs. The Lord claims these doves as his own. He claims these doves as his own, calling them my doves. Truly, the God of him, God of Israel, wholeheartedly hides himself. Similarly, this dove that belongs to God also wholeheartedly hides itself in the cliffs of the rock and in the secret places of the stairs. Therefore, there is a strong relationship that is developed between this dove and the dove's beloved. This dove does not even reveal its face even to the Lord. It does not let out a voice wishing that the Lord should hear its voice. We read in the book of Isaiah, that people will wa, will walk with tinkling, with the tinkling noises of their feet so that they may be heard as they walk. Even as they endeavor to manifest the beauty of their face, they also wish to manifest the beauty as they walk. But when we consider this dove. It remains hidden, not even showing its face to the Lord. It does not sound its voice on the street corners and on the lanes, wishing that its beloved would hear it and come down to see it. Because the voice of such will not be heard on the streets. Because his voice remains only in the confines of the secret chamber. Only those who enter into the secret chamber can perceive that voice and can hear that voice. So does even this dove, it remains hidden. We consider here two places where the dove hides itself. Firstly, it hides itself in the cliffs of the rock. And secondly, in the secret places of the stairs. It does not seek places after its own desire. It specifically seeks out the cliffs of the rock and goes there to hide itself. Beloved, when we speak of the cliffs of the rock. It speaks of our life of faith. Believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. And then shall he be saved and thy household too. Jesus said, if thou shalt believe, it shall be possible. For those of them who receive the Lord Jesus Christ by faith, they become the sons of God. How do we come to know that our faith is pinned upon the Lord Jesus Christ? When we attain to the experience which remains hidden in his wounds. When we read in the book of Isaiah, chapter fifty-three and verse five. It is being said by the prophet, with his stripes, we are healed. These, nowadays people do not seek in order to pin their faith and hope upon the Lord Jesus Christ and seek the experience of the mystery of the Lord's wounds, rather they seek to, seek other places which belong to the world. Some people have made reservations in hospitals so that they may go to hospitals and stay there all through their life. Some people have personal doctors and they, they will consult once, only with their personal doctor. If they feel that there is a very small symptom of a sickness or, or disease, they will instantly go in order to hide in that secret place of the world. They believe that he is one who forgives sins. But they do not realize and believe that he will forgive man his sins, or, or he will clean man from sickness. When we read in Hosea, chapter eleven, the Lord accuses. I took him by hand and he, and I taught him to walk. Nonetheless, he did not believe that I am a God who heals. He was not able to walk. He was unable to walk. He collapsed. He collapsed, almost reaching the grave. And from that horrible pit of the grave, did I lift him up. I redeemed him. Formerly, he did not know to walk, he was unable to walk. But I took him by my hand and I led him and held him to walk as one would a little child. He was walking by my side. But now he has fallen sick. Now he does not look unto me. He does not seek me, a God who is in secret. Now he directs his eyes towards the world. He has for refuge unprofitable doctors of the world. He goes after the works and doings of people who are absolutely useless. He, he scatters money before people who are useless and unprofitable. Nonetheless, he languishes not being delivered. He does not believe that I am a God who delivers. How many of you are like these Hebrews? Oh beloved people of God. Where does he seek you? He seeks, seeks you in that, in that, in that chamber of faith. He watches to see whether you are in that chamber of faith, abiding there in prayer and secret with those who pray. If your sicknesses should be remedied, which are both secret and that which are brought abroad. You have to enter into that chamber of faith. During that time, do not make known to the people of the world your sickness and the agony that you undergo. Do not call woe unto me, woe unto me there. Though you are almost at the brink of death, your face should shine. Your words should be words of faith and full of power. When Pastor Silvan was sick, I was talking to him for a while. Pastor was sharing with me the essence of a couple of Bible studies which he shared with the servants of God. And he asked me, pastor, this was what I taught the servants of God, and he, and he asked me, is it, was it right? His revelation was very different from mine and I was wondering, well, is there such a revelation at all? And while we were in conversation for about thirty minutes, I, I asked him, pastor, you've been sitting, sitting all this while, can you not just lay down? And I said, pastor, you've been speaking all this while, would, would you not drink water? And pastor laid his hand to his forehead and said, pastor, even as I am speaking things that relate to trans, transformation, you are talking about earthly things. Just see the boldness of those who abide in the chamber of faith. They are, they are not stricken with the fear of death. They have no death. In our midst are present many such servants of God and believers who live such a life. Where will the Lord go seeking after? Will it be that secret chamber of faith where such people are present or the, that other chamber, secret chamber in the world where other people are present? When the Lord who is in secret will see your works, he will, he will, he will, he will reward you openly. And through you will, the Lord manifests the power through you. Therefore, the Lord has his eyes fixed upon you, that he may visit you in that secret chamber. Oh my dove, that dwells in the cliffs of the rock. The Lord is speaking the very same thing even to those people who are in that experience and are seated here. Oh my dove, that dwells in the cliffs of the rock. Are you able to hear that voice? Into which secret chamber have you entered? Are you in the chamber of faith, of the chamber of prayer? Or have you sought after those chambers where man wishes to expose his face to others? Today, seek and find out that chamber, that secret chamber where you are present. If you have to hear of the, the voice of the Lord Jesus Christ. If you have to behold his countenance. Enter into the secret chamber. And nextly, he says, oh my dove, that dwells in the secret places of the peaks of mountains. The secret places of the peaks of mountains. When you consider rocks on one side, there are also high mountain peaks. These are places which are the apt refuge, refuge for doves. No adversary can enter into that region where there are those lofty mountain peaks in which doves seek refuge. Atop these rocks are present mountain peaks in which doves seek refuge. According to first Corinthians ten four, that rock is Christ Jesus. As we read in Colossians, the Lord Jesus Christ who is that rock is the foundation stone of our church. In Isaiah twenty-eight and verse sixteen, we read that this cornerstone of the foundation has been laid up in Zion. It is not moved. It was tried. It is a precious stone. It was made the headstone of the corner. Now there are these mountain peaks in the rocks. What do we read in Colossians two twenty? Built upon the foundation of the apostles and prophets. And to that foundation is he laid up as the cornerstone. One is not able to see the cornerstone. Upon which have been laid the foundation stones. The foundation stones are that which are seen of others. The cornerstone remains hidden in the earth. But the foundation stones are seen above, the, the surface of the. It was laid as a foundation upon the rock. It shall not be moved, how, in, in whatever way. When we read in Matthew's Gospel, chapter seven, verse twenty-four forward. Here, Jesus has spoken about a house whose foundation. Here, Jesus has spoken about a house whose foundation has been laid upon a rock and another house whose foundation has been laid on sand. The house whose foundation has been laid upon a rock will not be destroyed in any way. If the foundation itself is shaken, what will the righteous man do? Beloved people, you may build up a house, but if it should not be moved or should collapse or be destroyed. That house should be founded upon a rock. When we read in the episode to the Ephesians. When we read from verse 20 forward. In whom you are also built for inhabitation of God through the Spirit. You are edified as lively stones. With Jesus Christ the living stone. And with the foundation which are also lively stones. And he also builds you up upon that foundation as a superstructure as lively stones. Though therefore, if it is stricken with a tempest. If there are waters from floods and rains that lash against it. Though it keeps lashing against it. It is not moved or shaken. Therefore, those who remain hidden within it are not afraid in any way. That is a place where people seek refuge to preserve themselves. They keep themselves hidden there. Where do they hide themselves? In the secret places of the mountain peaks. Let us read from Acts of the Apostles, chapter 8 and verse 42. Chapter 2 and verse 42.
And they continued continuously in the apostles' doctrine and fellowship and in breaking of bread and in prayer.
This is a secret place, a secret chamber. In the first century period, the people of God who were water-baptized, they continued steadfastly their apostles' doctrine, fellowship, breaking of bread and in prayer. They never venture out of the secret chamber. They do not seek another place that they may listen to doctrines there. They do not seat themselves in whatever place they wish to be seated to break bread. But for standings steadfast in the apostolic fellowship, they fellowship not with any other people. They do not seek other people's assistance in prayer, neither do they go to any other place. They are in unison with the apostles even as they are in prayer. He sees this dove that abides in the secret chamber. He calls this dove. Show me thy countenance. Do not expose your countenance to the world. Do not expose your countenance to mankind. I am desirous of seeing your countenance. Do not hide it from me. Hide it not. I am a God who hides myself. Because you hide yourself. I am having this deep desire to see your countenance. I am desirous of seeing your countenance. Show me your countenance. Let me hear your voice. Let me hear the voice of you worshiping me. Let me hear the voice of you praising me. Let me see your life of you living in unison with your apostles. Let me hear your voice of prayer, you being seated with them. Do not run after your whims and fancies. Do not depart from the apostles. Now, listening to the apostolic doctrine. And breaking bread with them. And abiding in their fellowship. And the Lord is to return very soon to gather those people who wish to continue in prayer with your apostles. One such a people will see the Lord face to face. They prepare themselves to that end. One day, we should also see him face to face. On that day, we should resemble him. For which reason, just like how a God hides himself. Similarly, may we also live our life hiding ourselves. For a minute, may we close our eyes. If those who can, please be on your knees. Let's all close our eyes. Let us lift up our eyes towards the heavenly realm. May we behold our Father who is in secret. For which, enter into the secret chamber of prayer. Enter into the chamber of faith. Continue in the apostolic fellowship. Surrender yourself for them. Continue with them in prayer. Lo, the Lord sees you. His eyes are fixated upon every one of us. Upon you who are listening to God's word, is God's power falling. Speak, speak to him. Speak in unknown tongues. And speak to Jesus so that Jesus may have a desire to see your countenance. Oh, Jesus, I wish to see your face. I wish to be changed like you. I present my face before you. You preserve me. Grant me mercy. Hear my voice. But for thee, I have no other refuge. May we cry out, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. No, the power of God is falling. From you, from this day, will be removed all worldly experiences. Unbelief will be removed. Ignorances will be removed. You will see the glory of Jesus. You will hear his voice. Lo, he comes. Oh, my dove. I wish to see your countenance. Let me hear your voice. Raise up your voice. Jesus. Show me your countenance. Fill me with your glory, Lord. Speak to the Lord. Let him hear your voice.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Do rabana shida, rabat duna, do rabana dura, dukkara bala kashidika bala dura. Hallelujah.
He is moving in our midst. He sees us. Not only has he brought in transformation to your soul, he has also brought in transformation to your body, even to those of you who have listened to his word. Your sicknesses have departed from you. Oh, people who have been delivered of your sickness, praise God. We are sitting here, we are singing, but the Lord has come to us. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. Stotra, 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 stotra. In the past, they were so faithful, but they have come back. Praise the Lord, stotra, 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 stotra. We have come back to you, we have come to you. We have come to you. Hallelujah.
This is a secret place, a secret chamber. This is a secret place, a secret chamber. In the first century period, the people of God who were water-baptized, they continued steadfastly their apostles' doctrine, fellowship, breaking of bread and in prayer. They never venture out of the secret chamber. They do not seek another place that they may listen to doctrines there. They do not seat themselves in whatever place they wish to be seated to break bread. But for standings steadfast in the apostolic fellowship, they fellowship not with any other people. They do not seek other people's assistance in prayer, neither do they go to any other place. They are in unison with the apostles even as they are in prayer. He sees this dove that abides in the secret chamber. He calls this dove. Show me thy countenance. Do not expose your countenance to the world. Do not expose your countenance to mankind. I am desirous of seeing your countenance. Do not hide it from me. Hide it not. I am a God who hides myself. Because you hide yourself. I am having this deep desire to see your countenance. I am desirous of seeing your countenance. Show me your countenance. Let me hear your voice. Let me hear the voice of you worshiping me. Let me hear the voice of you praising me. Let me see your life of you living in unison with your apostles. In the midst of a war, we are in the midst of a war. In the midst of a war, we are in the midst of a war. In the midst of a war, we are in the midst of a war. In the midst of a war, we are in the midst of a war. In the midst of a war, we are in the midst of a war.